Okay, well, go ahead and get started. Did all of the scouts all get signed in? Has everybody signed in? If not, you can come up and talk with Sarah.
I already have some with them, so some emailed in previously.
Okay, alright.
If we don't get them, will you read them? I'll go with Sarah.
Okay. Alright. First thing, we're gonna go ahead and get started, and we're gonna start with the prayer, and then go on to the pledge. The prayer will be offered by Rocky Bishop, and the pledge will be by Isaac Nelson. And they are, Rocky, I believe is, are you the scout master, or what are you?
Assistant scout master.
You're what?
Assistant scout master.
Assistant scout master. And then we have one of the scouts for Troop 991 in his spring training ward, so... Do you wanna come up and do the prayer, and then we'll do the pledge after that? Just come up to the mic.
Our Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this opportunity to gather as a community. We would ask that you would send our spirit, your spirit, to be here with us, and that we will discuss matters that pertain to our community, and that we will resolve any issues that we have, and we see you standing in Jesus Christ's command.
Amen.
Please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Appreciate those that helped tonight. First thing on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the approval of the October 18th, 2017 council meeting minutes. Do we have any discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'm moved that we approved the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion, and a second, any other discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Next thing is the public forum. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to get up and say anything to the Mayor and Council, please come to the microphone, state your name, address, serial number.
Teresa Hyatt, I gave all you guys a picture of this. I had somebody contact me, that somebody had fallen in this hole. There used to be a cone there, an orange cone, but it's gone now. And it's right in front of a business, and they would like to have this fixed as soon as possible. Is that something you guys can do?
Have you talked to staff about it?
They called in, and they're the ones that came and put the cone there. But the cone's gone now.
Convis? Have you seen the picture? You seen it? Alright.
We'll look at it. We'll fix it.
It looks like something that needs to be taken care of. It's in our shopping area, and it looks to be, at least to me, like something that you could really hurt yourself on. Okay? Anybody else? Nate?
I was asked to read this, and this came a letter from the city coun, or to the State Council. I don't know if you all got one, or if it just came. But it says, "Dear Payson City Council members, our oral surgery practice believes that businesses in our community should give back to those less fortunate whenever possible, and help further the health, well-being of our citizens. When there's a need, and we have the means, it is our obligation to do something about it. The oral surgeons at our practice enter their field to have the opportunity to help people. I imagine you entered your field for the same reason. We recently launched the second year of a community program to do just that. The annual Share a Smile program gives deserving local residents in need a brand-new smile and a second chance at life. This program is for those who have such terrible oral health that they need any remaining teeth removed and full arch restoration performed, giving them permanent new teeth that look and function just like healthy and natural teeth. Our hope is that this will give the recipient the ability to pursue their career, achieve their life goals, and live with confidence. We see patients on a daily basis who are incredibly ashamed of their appearance and experience extreme pain. We are partnering with local dentist and a dental lab, both of whom are donating their services for this important cause. This is our second year running this charitable program for the community. Last year, we were given the opportunity to completely change the life of Alex Uribe. Although incredibly motivated and driven in his studies, Alex felt discouraged by his concerns about what others thought of him. With a brand-new smile, Alex is now able to live each day with the utmost confidence. This year, we look forward to transforming the life of another local resident. On November 21st at 9:00 a.m., we will host this year's announcement event, where our final recipient will find out that they will receive this monumental gift. We hope you will want to join us and show your support. It is sure to be life-changing for all present. Utah Surgical Arts, 3610 North University Avenue, Suite 150 in Provo. For more information, you can go to their website, utasurgicalarts.com/ShareASmile. We appreciate everything you do, and we hope to see you there. Appreciate you any email, so that I can make sure to reserve you seat for anyone that you'd like to bring."
Anybody else like to, or seeing none? We'll go ahead and go to staff reports. No staff?
Mayor and Council, just a quick update in public. At the pool, we've polarized the pool, except for a few things. We are currently having some of the decking lifted. That's dropped maybe a half an inch to an inch around the edge of the pool to fix a trip hazard. That company started a while ago and had some equipment failure, but they were back today to continue that. We've also, as you're aware, we've started our youth wrestling and volleyball programs this last week, and we're wrapping up tonight with our tackle football. That's wrapping up. We are accepting registrations for youth basketball, as well as adult basketball for the public, so that is coming up as well. We've also, we're putting to bed, of course, all the athletic fields. We'll be blowing out the sprinkler systems starting tomorrow on those. Of course, they've been drained already, but we still blow out the sprinkler heads, so...
Thank you.
The net is down. Took that down about two weeks ago. Thank you, Scott.
Mayor and City Council, this past weekend, we participated in the National Prescription Take Back Event, and so we held two of them this time, one at Payson Market and one in Santaquin, at the Santaquin Police Department. So I just wanted to let you know, in Santaquin, we took 41.7 pounds of prescriptions, and in Payson, we took 32.8 pounds, for a total of 74.5 pounds of unused prescription drugs. And then, the police officers gathered those up and took them to a drop-off point where the DEA collects them and insinuates them for us. So we felt proud of that, to get those out of our community and make our community safer for residents.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, we'll go to council. Scott? We're just actively out trying to get the bottles before, or there's still some, I guess. If you see any, please give Debbie a call, so if they can track them and get them done. And? Brad?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
I just poked my head in the Petite Nate dance. It was kinda fun. If they do it again next year, they had a big band, and they had teenagers and old farts like me, and everybody in between, and it was kind of a fun event. I don't know that a lot of people know about it, but it was fun. I also want to just thank our staff, as always. They work really hard. They're not perfect. They do make mistakes from time to time, but I'm confident that they have our town's best interests at heart, and I really appreciate what they do. And I think we really have fine employees that look for us, and so I'd just like to thank them.
Alright. I'd echo what Doug said about the employees. I think they do a great job. About a couple of items I wanted to bring up. For those of you who have not voted, vote occurs on Big Forum Tuesday. You need to make sure you get, take care of that. Make sure you do that. UDOT had an open house on Thursday night. I thought we had excellent attendance. They were very courteous and kind, and explained to a lot of concerned citizens what the options were all about, and I think that I'd like to see that process keep moving forward. We need to, one reason we haven't had a lot of development on North Interchange is because nobody's known what they're gonna be able to do long-term there. And I think as we get, go down the road on this, we're gonna get that resolved, and that'll help us on developing the North Interchange. Did have a couple of questions for staff. I was out at the Veterans Home yesterday, and I talked to them. That made me think about a question that we had had maybe about six months ago, and I haven't had a follow-up, which was, we were gonna sit down with SESD, and I think try to resolve the payment situation down there. Do we ever do that?
Sarah sat down with your finance person a couple of times, but it's been a little while since we've...
But we didn't resolve, or resolve that issue?
They received a credit.
It was what?
They received a credit.
No, I mean, as far as between the city and...
You're talking about their bill, right?
Between us and SESD, as far as their providing service out there and so forth. There was a question about whether we were getting the right reimbursements and so forth. Could we get that done? I think we owe them that. Then the final thing was, had the opportunity also to think of our sewer. We've been talking a lot about sewer, at least I've been talking a lot about sewer in the last few days. And I ended up having a question on our line that goes up to the Outgrids, and also handles Woodland Hills. How do we feel about how that's gonna develop? I mean, what's our capacity in those lines? And, you know, there's a lot of development going on up there. Do we have any idea where, how we feel? And then the second question was, I know there was some concern from citizens about the smell. I believe it was last year that came up, and I've never heard any...
Well, somebody just told us. We, Jeff, and Rick Roberts from Springbilly Net, and we're gonna put a drip. There's a little shack up there, they're gonna put some tricameral, so we'll pre-treat it, see what happens.
That should win this next week, so working on the smell issue. The other issue, they, each, each one of those cities have an agreement, they can connect so many, and we have capacity for that. As we do our upgrade, we are talking with Outgrids and Woodland Hills to make sure they locate the problems. So I don't see any concern. They haven't reached their capacity on how many in that.
I was just curious how we're doing on both those issues, because I hadn't heard back on, I know, the smell issue.
I think sooner or later, we're gonna have to put in a pre-treatment up there somewhere. What do you think?
I don't know. I guess we're gonna find out the chemicals. We're gonna try this chemical and see what happens.
Yeah. If not, we can have a pre-treatment somewhere.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Just one informational item. I think it's kinda funny. Maybe not funny is not the right word, but we talked about the trees, and replacing the trees, and we held it again, so we could have some open conversation ideas to get the word out. Just point of information I thought was interesting, I had 7,700 people view that specific one. I had 3,600 people look at I-15, and when we talk about taxes, it's like 800 people that actually look at that one. So apparently, for good or for bad, we care more about the trees on Main Street than the other. Out of those 7,700, 80 people said no, two or three said yes, but that means over 7,000 did comment, so they probably don't care.
Alright. We'll go ahead and close the council and staff reports, and we'll turn it over to Doug for the scout attendants.
Okay, I say this every time, I get the opportunity to do the scouts. This is one of my favorite programs. I'm a true believer in being civically minded and being involved in your community, and believe that a community is not made up of just six people, good staff. There's a lot of people that go into making a community a better place. And the more we're involved, and the more we know what's going on, and have a better understanding, I think the more we can have meaningful civil conversations. And we can disagree on things, but I think we can sit down and say that, you know, there's room for conversation, there's room for discussion. And I think the scout program in particular, I'm grateful for, because it teaches patriotism, it teaches the importance of getting involved and showing up, and just becoming familiar with this process, where a lot of people are scared to come to city council meetings. So we're glad that you're here, and we have a certificate for you. We're gonna have you come up across the stage, and there's a lot of you, if you're all here today, there's a lot of scouts. So I'll give you your certificate, you'll come line up over here, and then we'll have each one of you say something that you like about scouts. It's okay to repeat the same thing. You'll have to come up with something unique, if you like it as much as the other person, that's good. So as I read your name, can we get your certificate lined up here? We'll have you all say something, and shake the hands of City Councilman Mayor. Okay, first one, Isaac T. Mon? Isaac Elmer? Kirk Keaton? Isaac Nelson? Mason Walton? Ben Walton, Benjamin Walton? Carter Bishop? Whit Orton? Trevor Wilkinson? McCase Winston? Stockton Smith? Mason Hyatt? Ethan Gubler? Jameis Stevie? Derek Fundy? Jonah Lowry? Bryson Cunningham? Brock Rogers? And Tanner Grant? Anybody that we missed?
We missed one right there.
Okay, come tell us your name, we'll meet your certificate. Anyone else?
Come on up, tell us your name.
Joshua Marcus? Morcus. You're Mason's little brother. Tell me your name. Lane Lindstrom? Show me your name, two of your names. Greglin Lindstrom, you're a Lindstrom too. Awesome. And? Brett Finch. Okay, stay here, just give me your names. While we're getting their names, we start right here. We'll have you each say something, well, we'll start on the far end. Have each one of you guys say something you like about scouting. Oh yeah, after you get your certificate, why don't you come shake their hands? Hey, show us what you like about scouts.
I like winning things on skills you can use later in life.
I like that you get to explore anything. I agree with Kirk, but I still like going camping.
I like scouts because you can do new things. I like scouts since there's a warm, warm range of badges and skills.
I like scouts because they give them something to do. I like scouts because they learn a lot of stuff.
Louder.
I like scouts because they teach you how to be prepared for stuff.
I like scouts because you interact with the world.
I like scouts because you can do stuff.
I like scouts because you can be with your friends.
I like scouts because you can go to places.
I like scouts because of the variety of things to do.
I like scouts because you can help out the community and do things.
I like the campouts.
Okay, thank you.
And again, thanks for all the scouts, but not only for the scouts, but for the leaders that take the time out of their nights and their time to be with these boys in law. So, alright, we'll go from there, and I'll turn the time over to Communities of Care for the Youth Recognition Award.
Our first award is from Mount Ubo Junior High, and it's Angie Maharro. She could come up. And Angie, the teacher's right, Angie is an extremely bright and helpful and positive outgoing student. In Latinos in Action, she has definitely taken on a leadership role among her peers. She is the LIA Vice President and has attended all four community service events this year. Angie also puts her bilingualism to great use. She's extremely fluent in both languages and is always willing to serve as an interpreter at SEP's and does a wonderful job. Angie is an outstanding tutor at Barnett Elementary, and she is so awesome that the teachers will want to keep her as a tutor for the following school year as well. Angie is an excellent example to all around her and is diligent in her work. Congratulations, Angie. Our next student is from Payson Junior, and it's Melanie King. If she could come up. Her teacher's right, Melanie is always hardworking, self-motivated, and the first person to volunteer when one of her fellow students needs help or assistance. Furthermore, she sets a high standard for herself and encourages those around her to do the same. Her teacher, Mrs. Clayton, writes, Melanie is a dream student. She always completes her work on time, and it is perfectly done. She is kind and respectful, and so deserving of this award. Congratulations. And the next award is for Catherine Salazano from Payson High School. Catherine is a sophomore at Payson High this year. She is very involved in the school and is a wonderful example to her classmates of diligence and dedication. Her long-term goal is to go into the medical field, preferably as a pediatrician, because she wants to help others. She said, "I want to be able to spread my kindness in a way that will change people." Congrats, Catherine.
Eric, you're welcome to come up and get pictures.
You guys wanna stand right over here, come on up this way. Stand right there, and the line there, and there you go.
It's always neat to see these students just come in and be able to be rewarded for doing something positive, so congratulations, and you guys are great. Okay, next thing is the Chamber. We have a break from the Chamber here. You wanna come up for the Business of the Month?
Jade Walker happens to be outside, you can come in now. Jade Walker is normally our Business of the Month person, but she had a meeting for her work in Salem today. So I'm going to pitch it for her and award our November Business of the Month, and the business that was chosen for November is South Utah Valley Service Electric District, SESD. And they are awesome. Oh, sure, now she walks in. Okay, but I will just go ahead and finish. I'm just gonna read a couple of the things that were written, these were actually words from their nominations, so we thought they were pretty cool. SESD has always been community-focused, a public power for the people of South Utah County. The Board of Trustees has made a commitment to their neighbors to provide reliable, cost-effective, and efficient power at reasonable rates, and to support their cities, towns, and communities in their efforts. Recently, SESD has stepped up its community contributions and involvement. This year, SESD sponsored four city celebrations, made large contributions to the Central Utah Veterans Home, and helped sponsor the Utah Valley Western Heritage Night. And they are very active in the Chamber of Commerce. Recently, they did host one of our noon luncheons, and made a presentation there as well. And the Lions Club named the office manager, Jennifer Hatcher, as the 2017 Lioness of the Year. SESD has also been instrumental in providing innovative power solutions at Maple Dell Scout Camp, partnering with the Boy Scouts of America, to fund multiple utility line extensions and power projects throughout the camp. That is just a part of it, I won't read the whole thing to you, but that is just to let you know why the Chamber did pick SESD as the November Business of the Month. And I was told there are so many people there here to represent SESD. Is Jennifer in here, if you can? So yeah, do you all just come on up? Did you see her? They had a meeting, they were gonna be out, and they were coming here straight from that meeting, is what I was told, in Salt Lake. And they may have been stuck in traffic. But we do have their plaque, and we will present that to them. Next Tuesday, the 7th, at their office at 12:30 will be when we do present it to them. And all are welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next thing is, turn the time over to Melanie for Service Awards.
Can we have Eric Jewell come up? So Eric Jewell graduated from BYU with his degree in economics, and William and Mary's School of Law in Williamsburg, Virginia. Prior to coming to Payson, Eric worked as assistant Commonwealth attorney in Gloucester, Virginia, where he gained valuable training and experience preparing him for his current position. Eric is the Payson City prosecutor, and as such, Eric prosecutes for both Payson City and Mapleton City, which requires him to split his time among three different courts located in Payson, Mapleton, and Spanish Ford. Eric is a very dependable employee that always makes sure the job is done, even on his days off. He is always positive and encouraging, and a great asset in legal department here at Payson City. He creates a constructive and cheerful atmosphere, and is very well-liked and respected by his peer attorneys and coworkers. Eric represents Payson City extremely well in all aspects of his job. Eric enjoys the outdoors backpacking golf. He loves to travel, and anyone that knows him knows that he is a diehard BYU fan. Go Cougars, even when they're losing, right? Eric and his wife, Olivia, are the parents of three children. Eric is definitely an asset in Payson City. Congratulations, Eric. Ron? Ron has been meant to marry 41 years to his wife, Levert, and has 11 children, eight children and children. Ron started out as a step one apprentice, completed his apprenticeship to become a journeyman lineman in 1981. His journeyman is by the Intermountain Power Superintents Association, the state of Utah, and the federal apprenticeship program. Ron has been involved with Payson City Power for one-third of his existence. Payson City Power is celebrated 120 years. Ron has been involved with rebuilding two substation sites, built two new substations, and is currently working on building the city's fifth substation. The large, this large project has been involved with is the voltage cut-over project... This large project has been involved with is the voltage cutover project, which took the distribution voltage from 2,400 volts to 7,200 volts. This high voltage made the system more efficient and reliable. Ron received the Outstanding Appointed Official Award by the Utah League of Cities and Towns and Governor Levin in 1995. He received the Ted Bates Award in 1996. He also received the Power Distinguished Service Award in 2004 by Utah Associated Municipal Power Systems. And we want to congratulate Ron on 40 years of Payson City. Ned began his career in Payson working on the sewer crew that installed the trunk line for Payson to Outbridge. After finishing that project, Ned worked in the Sewer Department for three years, after which he took the position in the Water Department as a water operator. Ned is a friendly people person and gets along well with his fellow coworkers. We want to congratulate Ned on 10 years of Payson City. Brent Arns. Brent has been married for 25 years and has five children. He has been a water superintendent for four years and the Assistant City Engineer for ten. Brent has worked on Eminem Bowl with the sewer line to Outbridge, new water tanks, the 930 West Reconstruction Project, the Betty Quinn Stormgrade Project, and many others. Brent, congratulations on 10 years of the city. Mark Hyland. Mark is celebrating 30 years with the city. Mark currently serves as the Brute Superintendent Cemetery Superintendent. He takes great pride in maintaining the golf course and cemetery and the various parks. Mark is one of the hardest-working people you'll ever meet. In between Mark's busy work schedule, he enjoys finding time to call up and camp. Thanks for your hard work and dedicated service to Payson City for 30 years. Judge Dolph Pliss states that Emily Kay's public relations skills are exemplary. She is one of very few people who could, in response to a person placing a phone call to the court, advise them that they have to, that they have an active warrant for their arrest and before ending the call invite them to have a great day. And that is totally Emily.
I can vouch for that.
I would hope those defendants feel the sincerity in her voice. She is an expert when it comes to all things related to economics and device and eating, all things healthy for lunch, much to the chagrin of her fellow court staff. Well, she is an asset to us all in court, we value their service. One night in court, she enjoys nothing more than spending time with her husband, Casey, whether in joint landscape business or in the hills talking wild game. Even better are those hours she gets to spend underground with two or three-year-olds during some trip. Thanks Emily Kay for your years of service. Jeremy Albee, again, just another sign of his dedication. He is working tonight, so we cannot make it, but we still want to recognize him. Jeremy Albee has worked for Payson City for over 15 years at the Recreation Department. He is very passionate about serving the community, has a great disposition, and strives to fulfill the recreational needs of the public. He consistently does an exemplary job fulfilling his duties and is very detail-oriented. There are many behind-the-scenes tasks that need to take place in order to have a successful recreation program, and Jeremy spends some time to make sure these tasks are accomplished. Jeremy truly cares for our patrons and delivers the best experience possible, as shown through the many evening hours and weekends he works on top of the normal work week. Jeremy has proven his dedication to the community through his 15 years of service.
Okay, we, it looks like SESD got there a little bit late, so we'll give Jennifer a second to...
Oh no, I was going to show her my hand.
Oh, okay.
And tell you thank you for my award. Thank you too, thank you very much. Sorry I was late, traffic, you know. Thank you. Alright.
Anything you want to say to the public?
I'd better not, because you know, you're still mayor and maybe we can do that afterwards.
Alright.
But I'm glad we didn't get in trouble, right?
Alright.
Thank you for your work, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your banner is looming up in our office, come and see it, we have lots of leftover Halloween candy. So all you scouts, come to my office and eat my candy, okay?
Alright, next thing on the agenda is the Conditional Use Permit for Payson Auto Body and Glass located 438 South 100 West. And turn that over to the planning committee.
I'm told that this game on, game seven, keep it short, so I'm going to try to do that. But unfortunately I have to wait till this projector start working. Okay, so this request is a Conditional Use Permit. The applicant runs Payson Auto Body and Glass. And he's, he had been running it in one location, Payson, he's moving a few blocks south to the old Advanced Auto Parts, Advanced Auto Parts building. He has a business license already to operate used car sales there. And a portion of the business that is a Conditional Use is the repair. So he's doing both repair work and then selling those cars. And then I guess as a way of reminder, Conditional Use Permit, I guess so the public understand, Conditional Use Permit means that the use is permitted in the zone, however, the impact can be more intense than your traditional permitted uses and so there could be impacts that go beyond what's normal that need to be abated. And so we can apply conditions in order to mitigate those additional harmful impacts. So we're going to be discussing about those potential impacts today and proposing conditions, which you can choose to accept or add additional conditions or fewer than what we discussed today. So in, just by way of introduction here, 438 South 100 West. It's down right here. He currently, or previously had been operating up in this area up here off 100 North. There are two businesses on that block, so he's moving down here where he's going to have his own location down there. And it's zoned as a commercial zone, GC1. So here you can see the zoning map and you can see the block up closer. So the old Carquest building, that's what comes up on Google Maps. And then GC1, so again, that's the commercial zoning. There's a street view from a while ago, so you may recognize that building. So that's the one that is going in now. He already has the signs up and whatnot for the permitted use portion of the business. So here's the site plan. He has the same parking that's used there. No modifications have really happened to the building, except for he does have a bay that he can bring a car into to work on the car. There's a paint booth that he's installed and that meets the building and whatnot codes that that's already been, I understand that that's been inspected and approved.
What's the block?
Which one?
In the back.
Dumpster side?
Yeah, dumpster, yeah.
What is it?
Dumpster side?
Oh dumpster.
Yeah, so nothing's really changed.
No, the block is clear in the back.
Uh, this one?
No.
Nope. Keep going up right there.
This one is that?
What is that? That's really small.
That's been torn down years ago.
Existing, oh, the existing storage shed. So that was a storage shed that existed when the original site plan was submitted. And then that's, yeah, since it's been torn down. So the front portion of the lot has this building on it and the parking lot. And the lot goes all the way back here and this portion is undeveloped. So at some point, that could either be parcel off or developed as part of this parcel. If the applicant chooses to expand the building he's currently renting. So at some point, assuming business goes well here, he could purchase his property, he could grow the business here at this location. The owner could sell the back portion. And we'll talk about that in a bit, about how that might affect some of the conditions we want to put in here. But again, the applicant's not expanding or changing any of these walls or changing any of the parking. And the floor plan, the only thing new is that he's added that paint booth right there. So there's just that, the one bay. So here's the overview of the request. So again, the Conditional Use Permit for the auto body slash repair shop, which is Conditional Use in the zone. And the city may oppose the conditions. So I think the next slide, now we're going to look at some of the proposed conditions. And these ones came, this went through Planning Commission. And they approved or recommended these conditions. So I guess, first of all, as you pointed out, that the base zone, alright, I'm going to sit back even further. A Conditional Use runs with the property, doesn't just run with the owner. So if this applicant were to move somewhere else, another auto body shop could come in and that runs indefinitely with the property. And so we have the restrictions of the current zone. However, the current zone could change, our ordinance could change in 10 or 20 years and the Conditional Use Permit would still be valid. So while we do have some restrictions in the current code, we want to make sure that the Conditional Use Permit also covers those things in case the zone changes, but we still want to have those restrictions on this property. So with opaque screening, the GC1 zone requires that all of the work be performed inside the building and that any outside storage be either enclosed or if the city allows, it could be behind an opaque screening fence. However, I put that in here as a proposed condition, even though this current applicant has to follow it already because the zone could change at some point and we still want to have this Conditional Use Permit in place. So we have the opaque screening fence if he chooses to have any outdoor storage in the back or have dismantled vehicles staging in the back. Also, currently, right now, under Payson City Code, 19.6.13.13, so that's the GC1 code. It says that no unsightly storage of any kind or non-licensed or abandoned vehicle shall be stored in an open space. It doesn't address other items, it does say junk. But I think there's a good argument that some items that this applicant could, or future owners could store in the back, would not fall under that category. They could be licensed vehicles, they're not abandoned, they're not junk, but there's still outdoor storage. So we want to make sure we have something in the Conditional Use Permit that says they would need to be screened or stored indoors. Hours of operation restriction, we talked about this, and the Planning Commission suggested 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM would be hours that he would be allowed to work. Again, all the work needs to be done in the enclosed structure, so there won't be outside work going on. That's what they felt would be the maximum hours, that's not 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but that would be up for discussion. So then we have, again, the restoration repair work in an enclosed structure. Currently, with street parking, there's no street parking permitted, there's not really space. However, again, that's a UDOT road and if that road ever changes, there could be a scenario where there could be street parking permitted. Again, it's an unmoored point right now, but we might want to recognize that at some point if that street changes and there's space, would we want street parking of these vehicles that are for sale or whatnot? The paint booth, I think that's been addressed already, but if that changes at some point in the future, to have exterior equipment that would need to be screened. And then the work would be limited to passenger vehicles. So by passenger vehicles, we're talking a regular car or truck, not a semi tractor trailer, those kind of things. So heavy equipment, so it doesn't become a wrecking yard or salvage yard or large commercial vehicles like a bus or something that would come in. And then with the chemicals listed, pretreatment, that's with the paint booth. And I think the applicant's already done that and worked with fire on that. But for future owners, that we make sure that we know what kind of chemicals are being used there. If there is lighting, like parking lot lighting that goes in, that that would be shielded so it doesn't go into the surrounding residential areas. And I guess I should probably go back to this map right here. So you can see that behind the business, so right now the business is in the front, there's the open area in the back. There's some residential property right here that's underdeveloped. Like there's some housing on it, but at some point, there could be future development, infill development there. This wild zone GC is residential property. As well, on the north side, there's some residential property over here. So there are some residences right now, at some point it just expands. That could impact the living condition of those residences. And so one of the conditions is that any expansion, I don't believe that's on this slide, but I think it was in the staff report, that any expansion of the business or redevelopment in the back portion of the lot would allow the city to review the conditions and oppose any new conditions that would be necessary with that expansion in the back, such as an opaque screening fence for the business. And then, oh yeah, I guess that is the bottom, review of conditions. And then that brings us to the actions that we can take today, which is sending it back to staff or approving without any conditions, or approving with the conditions discussed. And again, those may include additional ones that you guys bring up or fewer conditions if you feel like some of these conditions would not be necessary. Or we could say that the impact is so great that there's no conditions we could apply that would mitigate the harm and we'd have to deny the application. So those are all of the options that we have.
So do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear on that upfront, that there's no vehicles should be worked on upfront, correct?
That's correct.
And that's specifically spelled out there?
I mean, that's, that's how the zones ring, we could make sure that's even more clear.
I mean, I'm fine with the all cells, but the wreck vehicles need to be either inside or behind.
Or sort of behind and screened. And we might want to spell it out, you know, specifically in the Conditional Use Permit, yeah.
The applicant's here, right?
Yes, he is here.
Are you willing to live by all these conditions?
Yes, I believe that's the law anyway, you can't work on vehicles outside.
Yeah. Yeah, most of these meets the current.
Well, I guess my point was, so you don't store the wreck ones out front, so you don't have to, you know.
The visual collection as you go down the road. And then the ones in the back are screened off from the residents, you know.
Hey, did you talk to the residents around?
So we had the hearing last time and everyone who came was very supportive. I was quite surprised to see a business like this have nothing but very positive comments. I can't remember the number of members from publicly had it, it was a good handful. And all of them spoke quite highly of the business that he does and the work that he does and its impact on the community. So there weren't any neighbors that came objecting it or even bringing concerns, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just a little bit concerned about looking till 10 o'clock. Do you really feel like you need to keep it open? Do you really feel like you need to keep it open?
Uh, I'm often there with the doors closed at that hour, but we're behind insulated walls.
Oh, okay.
We're found inside.
But it is not open for business, just you will be working.
Yeah, just workers or myself may work after our insurance companies push us to, to do things beyond our capabilities.
Typically, we get, um, the planning commission minutes for this kind of thing. Um, it really helps to have that available, look at the comments of the planning commission. Some of us are there on a regular basis, but sometimes ours, the council doesn't see that. I'd be hopeful they have.
I have, I have one copy, but.
Yeah, I mean, if it's just part of the package, then, then we can see it and the public can see it too because of the Utah Right to No Red websites and so forth.
Okay, do we have any other discussion?
Uh, I'm just recommending we have no, uh, off, off-site parking. Um, the other, I don't know if you're moving from down here.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we've had a, a kind of a big problem keeping the rec cars off the streets. Um, I've, I've spoken to him several times about.
That, that was the other business.
Was that the other business owner? Okay, so that, that was my concern. Also, not having any on-street parking on that, that, this current location, because you come up out of that driveway, it's a, it's a visual barrier that, that would cause some problems, so. I'm, I'm happy if he's taking the cars from there after there, that would make a big difference on the other end of town. So that, that's the concern I've had, we've tagged him, we've talked to him, we've, they continue dropping, dropping down there. I don't, I don't wanna see that continue on this end, so that's all the comment I have.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, general conditional use permit for Payson Auto Body and Glass with noted, uh, conditions, uh, conditions that staff recommended.
All staff conditions.
No second path.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, is there any other decision, or discussion? Seeing none, Mike?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution amendments to the Payson City fee schedule. And, uh. I guess Tracy.
I guess I'm going first. Uh, the re- recommendation at the golf course this year, I met with, uh, other golf professionals in Utah County, is the only increase we see is the season, the annual season pass is going up. How we come to this conclusion is, uh, looking at all the other, uh, golf courses in the valley, we were one of the lowest ones, which doesn't make sense, because we're probably the best golf course. And then secondly, running the numbers and, and we haven't, uh, our passes go annually through November fifteenth. So I won't get this year's data until November fifteenth to see where our, our passes are. Uh, it's been, oh, geez, at least five or six years since we've raised those rates on the passes. So that's where we drew that conclusion, just to, uh, you know, to bring in more revenue to help with the facility.
What, what's the rate gonna be?
Well, each one, it, uh, like, like a, a seven-day adult went up fifty dollars, a couple went up like a hundred dollars. It just depended on what pass, we have, we have quite a few different options. And as of right now, that didn't, uh, affect the punch cards, uh, they stayed the same. And then the only other rate increase was on a private cart, uh, trail fee went up a dollar on making home. And, and all, and, and, and we're just staying in line with what the rest of the county's doing, so.
I have a great question.
Okay.
Um, do other golf courses charge more for out-of-town, like other municipal golf courses?
They bounce back and forth some, uh, like if you get into a bigger area, maybe like a, a Provo or an East Bay, where they have a, a bigger group to draw from, then they'll, they'll do some, uh, resident, non-resident rates. We've done resident, non-resident rates. Uh, it's challenging because you might have people that live on your golf course that pay more. Uh, so a couple of years ago, maybe three or four years ago, the council decided to, to take that off so we could, you know, so someone, we view as, our golfers are from Santa Queen, Genoa, Goshen, Mormon, Nephi, all that, so. Uh, we stay pretty consistent with like Spanish Oaks and Hubble Creek. So.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, it might be two zero. And it might be for the Astros.
It is.
Darn.
We need to have a different outcome on that.
I agree.
Uh, Mayor, Council, this, our part of the, uh, fee hike was, we're, we're, we have, as part of our continuing SWIP, you know, stuff that we have to deal with on the storm drain, we have a land disturbance permit that we're gonna start requiring as part of the application process. And on that, uh, there's just some fees that, they're pretty small, it's like eight dollars and something cents a month. And then they can do it for a six-month period or a year, or five years or whatever it is. But we just had to add those fees in to be able to do that, to be able to charge them on that permit, so that's, that's kinda what ours is, so.
What is it?
Just a land disturbance permit, so it goes along with the SWIP, so the stormwater pollution prevention plans that we have to do. And just the other cities are all doing it too, and we're, we're part of that coalition of, I think there's ten or twelve cities in it. They all are kinda doing this, so we didn't wanna be the only city not doing it, so.
Okay, do we have any discussion? We have a motion.
There is.
There's just a fee there.
There is one other fee that is, is proposed to be changed or added, is this accessory apartment permit. Uh, we have not had one before, we are working on, uh, and working with the public on that. And, um, that's the last fee that is on this, uh, change.
Okay.
How much does that land disturbance cost? It's like eight dollars or something, thirty-four cents, it's not. I mean, it's not much. So, it won't, it won't cover our costs by anything, but it's not. You know, it's more just a, another process to make sure they fill out all the questions and then we charge them a little bit, but it's not. Can we get these lights turned back down, I've got scouts trying to take notes.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, do we have any more discussion? A motion.
Mayor, I'll move, we adopt the resolution approving the changes to the safety schedule.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second, second? We have a motion and a second, do we have any other discussion? Seeing none, Mike?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, uh, last thing is the, uh, discussion regarding the general plan update. I'll turn that over to Travis.
Uh, Mayor, Council, this is the, uh, much anticipated wait on talking about strategic plans, general plans and master plans, so. Um, just, that's a, obviously kind of a side aerial of Payson there, and so, you know, just to kinda give a thing is, obviously, these are, these are kinda maps basically of what we need as a city to be able to move forward. And, you know, if we wanted to go from here to Timbuktu, and we don't have a map or any way that, to tell us how to get there, we don't know how to get there, then, then, you know, we're not gonna make it very far. So, the first thing I'll start off with is the strategic plan, which I'll def, I'll kinda define it from what, what they do. I'm not gonna read these word for word, but it, you know, it's kind of an overall vision of our community and a strategy to help us figure out kinda what we wanna be. So it's, you know, vision statements, promises and just a lot of different things that we, we wanted to find ourselves because, I don't know if we've truly defined what we wanna be, we have a lot of great things, but I don't know if we've ever really gone through a exercise of figuring that out. Um, so, uh, it's a process to help balance the demands of all our constituencies, which, you know, where you guys, the staff, the, the residents, the businesses, everybody that, that lives and works here, with the realities of what we have. You know, we could say we want a forty million dollar recreation center, which would be great, but could we really afford that? Or could we afford a tour, you know, so we gotta look at those things of what does and doesn't work for us. And by the way, this should be hopefully discussion, not just me rambling on. So if you guys have anything, stop me, let's discuss it as we go and, uh, just have me talk and.
I have a question for you.
Everybody's bored.
Um, do we have a vision statement?
Not that I know of, if we do.
I don't think we've got any.
Which is pretty amazing, the, for a city that we go out.
That's just such a, a few council members and, and today, and I think that's what the first thing you need to do probably in January, is create a vision statement, it could be an, uh, in, input from the city or from residents, but also input from employees. We need a, along with the strategic plan, I, I would like to see us to create a, a vision statement.
Yes, but I, I have not seen.
My, no, yeah, I haven't seen anything very specific, and that was very clear to me when UVU came and I talked to the others. Their vision statement was very clear, very simple, and you could tell that drove all of their discussions that they have in staff meetings. And I think it's important that we have a vision statement.
Yeah, so obviously, what is it, you know, why are these important and what are they for? The first step is obviously opening the line, the communication, which we're starting to do tonight and, and to do that with everyone that we can. I mean, are we gonna get all twenty thousand residents involved? No, but as many as we can, we'll get as much. And then without everyone on board, we're likely to fail because then it's, you know, five people's plan or, or staff's plan and council's plan or whatever, whoever's involved in that, so. So the, the, a strategic plan, from what I can look up, these are kinda new to all of us. So I, I got online and tried to find out what, what the steps were and what we need to do. So we need to define our core mission, which I'll add some to that, it's, um, the main building block that will keep us focused and, you know, and pointing forward. Uh, they kinda recommend you look at other municipalities to see stuff that you do like and, you know, and then obviously stuff that you like in your own community and kinda start formulating a plan of what, what do you want, what do you, what do you like in your communities? And then take those components along with your own and, you know, comments from staff and citizens and, you know, see where you wanna go with that. So your core mission should be a mix of some things your municipality is now and some things you wanna become in the future. And they say be sure it isn't too specific and try to keep it concise. So don't get, you know, so big that you're, you know, you're trying to solve everything in one statement, that's, you know, too hard ass long.
My question is, how long does it take to do a strategic plan and a general plan generally?
Um, it, I was gonna cut it get some.
I mean, we're kind of on the, uh, we're on the wave right now and I think, uh, if it don't get done soon, it's, we're just gonna be.
Yeah, and if we don't, and that's kinda why we will get to there, but, you know, I recommend doing all of this together because if we only, if we break it up and it takes us five years to get everything to where we know what we're doing, we are gonna miss everything with UVU and everything, so. I, I don't know for sure how long that will take, it would, it's kinda would come down to what firm we got and I guess, how tight are we trying to make a timeline and is that even realistic? You know, if we say they've got months to do it, we're probably not gonna get a very good plan. They're gonna, you know, we're gonna get a F, D minus plan. And so, you know, even a strategic plan could probably take four to six months depending on how we do it, so. Given the exact timeframe, I don't know. But a general plan could take a year, a year and a half, you know, depending how, you know, detailed and good we do it and how much involvement we get from public and everybody else, so. But the second part is a vision statement like we kinda brought up. So, you know, just kinda like it says, it's just what we're hoping to achieve in the future and the order and how we reach that, so. We've gotta come up with one, 'cause right now we don't have. Um, strategic priorities, uh, it says that you should pick five or six priorities and then, uh, that will guarantee you, you know, success. I mean, obviously there's, there's, these are some of them, they recommend economy, neighborhood livability, health and safety, transportation, you know, just to name some of them and then.
Did they, did they put restaurants on that?
They didn't specifically mention that, but I'm sure you could have that as a priority. And then, um, communication and roll out the plan. So obviously, just like, you know, even with the EIS study, you know, UDOT's tried to, to have communication with working groups and with the staff and the council and, you know, we just had the open house, like you saw, I saw quite a few of you at that, that, you know, just trying to get the word out of, this is what we're doing and, and get input back. And obviously not everyone's gonna be on board, but, you know, we've gotta at least have that opportunity, so. And then accountability, so just, obviously we've gotta set some way to measure this to see if we're moving in the right direction. So, you know, whether you, you do that through a scoring system or, or whatever, we've just gotta have, you know, some way in the plan to be able to tell us that we're even going in the right direction and we're not, we're not all thinking we're going this way and we're really going this way. So that's just kinda what we're talking about there. This is the Titanic, in case you were wondering, the picture on the right is of what it looks like now. But when we met with, when we were meeting as a staff, Dave and Jill and I, and that we met with, I think, five cities in total to kinda see what they were doing in their development process. And then we also met with Saratoga Springs and their city manager and teams, they, they were more interested in how the temple experience went for us, but we kinda morphed into a general plan discussion, could they just finish for us? And their city manager said if we don't, you know, if we don't do this, that, we're on the Titanic and we know the iceberg's right there and we're about to sink if we don't do something. And, you know, you don't wanna be negative, but that, you know, we hate to say that, but that's kinda where we, we can see it with.
We're kinda hitting the iceberg now, aren't we?
Yeah. And so I don't wanna be, and what I'm saying is I don't wanna be on the bottom of the ocean, that's where I wanna be, so. Um, you know, and just to kinda go along with that is, I just kinda looked up a few things, uh, just, I'll go through these really quick, but the last time we did our general plan was in two thousand and three, so that's fourteen years old. Our zoning plan would need updated, obviously with, it's not automatic that you automatically do that with your general plan, but we need to obviously get that updated with it. Um, the last culinary water master plan we had was in nineteen eighty-nine, that's not good. Um, the PI was done in nineteen ninety-one when the original system was designed, but since then, there hasn't been any study done on it. Um, a transportation master plan was done in nineteen eighty-nine. And then we did have a storm drain master plan done in two thousand and one, and then we have never had a sewer master plan done, ever, that I could find. And we actually have done, last year we did part one of the solid waste master plan, so that one is our newest and latest and greatest. And I've gotta get with Ron and find out what our last power one was, but it's not as old as some of the others. But that just shows you kinda where we're at and how, how far we're behind, so.
So I have a question. At our, at our work session, and this is probably our fault up here, but the mayor has had a work session with planning and zoning and we realize that all these are out of whack. I thought we gave direction to move forward with two of the master plans at that point in time, or at least one, I think it was the PI. But, but it's probably our fault, we didn't bring it up in, in the budget session. We talk, there's one of the problems we have is we need to make sure that we, we follow through on these things. We've talked about some things, but I don't think we followed through. There's a lot of back and forth, but I think at the end, we said, we need to do this, if I remember right.
We budgeted with the general plan and we had that, but we talked to the council before about not moving forward on the general plan until we figure out what UDOT's doing. Now, they just, they just did, it didn't make sense to spend the money on the general plan.
Oh, you, okay, that's right, I, I do remember that.
And so we do have the money budgeted for the general plan, but.
Okay.
After talking with Saratoga Springs, some of the others who felt like.
Strategic plan with the.
We probably gotta do some other plans along with the general plan if we get moving. Yeah, 'cause like Dave said, we only budgeted for the general plan and the others we've talked about. But without the, without the general plan and then the zoning that goes kinda hand in hand with that, that's how you have to do those utility plans. If you don't know what your zoning is, you can't wanna do the plan because you don't know, you don't have any way to anticipate how much growth you have and what, how many units you're even designing that for, so. So we'll, we'll go on to the general plan now, so obviously it's the citizens, it's the blueprint for development, the guide to achieving and defining our vision of the community. So it's, like I said, you're looking long range, you know, some of those areas may not develop for forty years, but you're still, at least you've got a plan so that you know where you kinda wanna move. Now, is that, is that a plan that you do and you never touch again and you go, you go twenty years and you don't have a new one? No, it's a, all of these plans are dynamic, you know. You may, you may plan on, okay, we want executive housing here and high density here and.
I think one of the biggest things on that is that, I think I've tried to touch on is, we need to figure out where our main artery is gonna be and our main larynx or, you know, where are we gonna go in town? Right, are we gonna take, take South out, are we gonna do, what are we gonna do?
Yeah, and that will be part of this, 'cause that is one of the required parts of a general plan, this is that.
Is there, is there one firm that you would hire to help master, you know, organize this?
As expensive as this gonna, is gonna be by state law, we would have to put this up to an RFP and then we would, and we, like when we did the South Meadows Plan, we actually did the, you know, the RFP and got the responses. And then we actually interviewed the top three firms that, out of that, to try to, you know, get the best firm we could. So we didn't just even, just go off one part of the process, we even moved it into interviews to see how they would fit in with us and what we wanted and. So we would do, I'm sure in this type of environment, we would do the same thing.
And then my question is, if we decide as a council, as a city, to. And then my question is, if we decide as a council, as a city, to move forward on more than just the general plan, I mean, let's go down and get these other things done, would that same firm do all those? Or would you be hiring them out and coordinating it?
What?
Because I'm seeing this as something that certainly staff doesn't have the time to coordinate. You've got to have somebody working for us.
No, it would be similar to the South Meadows, except bigger. You would have a planning group, a finance part of it, an engineering part of it, probably a transportation part of it. They would put their team together, but it could be a combination of three or four different types of firms than it would most likely be. Not one company could do all this. So it would be similar to that. You know, when we did the South Meadows, we had the planning group, we had OROCs on the engineering side and then you had Zions Bank, you know, there was, there was multiple groups and this would be the same thing.
Now, that, South Meadows cost us what, a hundred and?
About eighty-eight thousand.
Eight thousand. What do you estimate if we try to do all this?
Try not to cost out, but I would, I would guess we should probably budget for a half a million. Hopefully, it won't be that high. But this is why I say this, do we want the C minus plan that barely gets us through? Or do we want to go, I'm not saying we're going for the A plus, but do we want more of the B plus, A minus range? And it's hard to say because most cities don't try to tackle all of this at one time. But we're so far behind, I think we need to.
Well, most of the developers are gonna come in and just look at you and say, yeah, I have nothing.
Yeah, it's just like if we went and hired an economic development director right now, we'd look like idiots because that guy, that person would go out and try to sell the city and get business here. And they'd bring him into development services and we'd be like, I have no information to tell you. I don't know what utilities you need, we don't know, we have to rezone you. We would frankly look like a bunch of incompetent people. And that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Well, I thought it'd be, actually, you were gonna say something hire by two, two times, but my point being.
It could be, it depends how much we want to add.
My, my point is I don't think we can afford to figure this out and get, get the plan we need because we're in a crunch right now where if we don't act, we're in big trouble.
If we don't do it now, UVU's gonna come in the next couple of years or whatever and we're gonna just say, whoa, we can't do that.
Exactly, so we've got to do, we've got to get this thing moving.
Yeah, so we're, you know, pay for it. So obviously, we've got, it's an advisory guide for land use and then you still gotta pay your bond on the pool whether it's open or closed.
That's fine, we're still willing to fuck with a thousand on it.
Yeah, I don't, I think he has to look at the numbers, I don't think it's as great as you think.
What is it there?
I don't know.
What, is it making money?
No, it's not making money.
Well, then, close it.
But it offsets parts of its own cost.
Okay, but does it make money? Is it losing the city money?
There is a subsidy for the pool as well as a.
Well, let it start, that's a good start.
As well as a bond payment.
No closer parks and everything else.
Well, let's move forward.
So just the last thing I threw in here was just obviously, like I kind of mentioned, we have to do the zoning with this, even though it's not, it's kind of in there as part of it, but you, if we don't do that also, we're still not getting all the information we need.
You could abolish the zoning commission too and that would save money.
You gotta go over the mic, you've been stating your name if you want to say something.
Wrong, you're.
Well, no, up there, it's on the minute.
So just, these are the, these are what the state code, what the Utah code requires as part of your general plan, which is land use, transportation and traffic, like the mayor was saying, and moderate income housing. Now, our current general plan, even though it's outdated, I think it has eight elements, doesn't it, Jill? So, you know, we got to kind of see how many of those, we want to do all eight or not, but I would definitely recommend doing more than just the bare minimum if we're gonna do this and get a better idea now. That, that's something, when we do put this out to an RFP, I'd recommend we kind of break that up into those areas so we get a separate price for each one so that we, and put in there that, you know, we do reserve the right to not do all this at one time and cancel it. If we really do, you know, if it got to be eight hundred thousand and we were like, there's just no way we can afford that, maybe we do cut out some stuff. But, you know, it's hard to say how much this thing's gonna cost, but without it, we're just sitting blind. I know I am, I, it's like, you know, I've kind of used the quote like, if you were gonna build your dream house, would you do that with no plans and just tell some guy to go start building whatever he was gonna build? And that's just where we're at in the city. I, you know, without those plans, I really can't answer a lot of questions. We can guess and we can do our best, but it's, it's just that, we're just taking a stab and doing the best we can without a lot of knowledge, so.
The EIS, how long is before it's officially done?
They're saying spring, summer of next year before it's officially all the way up.
Are we far enough that we can start planning or do we need to wait till that's officially done?
There is a chance, they, they told us, there is a chance that it could change based on all these comments. I don't know how likely that is, I don't think they're gonna.
I guess it's too positive.
Yeah, I mean, I think we move forward with it, but I don't, it could technically change. I mean, there is that risk. So, and then just the last things I want to get into is just, why are, you know, a lot of this is pretty obvious, but why do we need master plans? Like I kind of stated, it gives a, you know, it makes us know what our infrastructure needs are, both for existing and future. Because, you know, a good example is like last year when we had the problem with the sewer plant with the effluent water that the, that the power plant uses. They couldn't use it because the trepidity was up and Jeff was trying and everything he could to figure it out, Springville was having, the Spanish were having the same problems for whatever reason. And so they had to switch over to our culinary water. Well, they were using so much water so quickly that we couldn't keep the tanks full. We ran the, we ran the wells for fourteen days straight without them shutting off. So if one of those would have went down, we would have been in trouble because we couldn't get the tanks full. So, you know, the power plant's clear on our north end and we were having pressure problems clear on the south end by the tanks because of how much water they were using. So, you know, especially in a, in a pressurized system like water, one area can affect an area clear away from it that is not the same in a gravity system. So that's one of those reasons. And then, you know, a master plan helps us determine how big and where we need water tanks, wells, PRBs, you know, lift stations, all that kind of stuff, so. And then, like I said, just we're guessing if we don't know, we don't, you know. Um, I'll get into that in a minute about a couple of other things, but we just don't have a clue if we don't have a plan and don't know how to get there, so. So here's, here was mine and you guys can add to this, subtract whatever you agree, but I tried to come up with some pros and cons of doing everything together. Um, so obviously, if we do it all together, we're not missing the windows much. We're not taking five years or six years to get all these. And then maybe the economy busts again and we're in another, maybe not a full recession, but we're, you know, we're not, we're not as busy as we are now, so. But because we don't have those answers still. And then, um, with the new interchange in UVU, like we've discussed, we really need to get prepared to know what those needs are because I personally think that's where our new development area is gonna be now. Is with those two coming in, that'll spur, you know, that'll spur.
Right, you got that, you got out west.
You know, that'll give us, I mean, people will be building multifamily housing around UVU and apartments and all kinds of stuff, so. So I think that's gonna be where that takes off. And then the infrastructure, you know, will be, like I said, that's where it's gonna go, I think, is in that northeast area, so. So this is just a couple of examples. We, Brent and I have been working with J U B engineers because we were concerned about some of these developments on Arrowhead Trail and where we don't have any plans. I have no idea what we need out there to even service them. And this may or may not be the only or best solution, but it was all we could quickly come up with without doing a master plan is just to service those, those developments out there and get PI that will work. We have to go and upsize five thousand nine hundred feet of PI line to twenty-four inch pipe. The estimate is one point eight million dollars just to do that. And, you know, like I said, this mayor, there might be better solutions, but we just, I, we don't know. I mean, this was just what we're trying to, I just don't want to go put a twelve inch water line that we should have put a twenty-four inch, that's what we were trying to avoid. And so, you know, as part of that study, we always knew we needed a water tank on the east side, but, you know, we might put a smaller one up by the golf course that'll serve from Salem Canal Road south and then a bigger one kind of by P Mountain that would serve all of this Bamberger Ranch and Arrowhead Trail area. That, you know, because right now, if we went and put a five, six million gallon tank up there at the golf course, we got a lot of water line to get to where we can even use it because all Red Orchard isn't going anywhere right now. So these are the kind of answers that the master plans will give us that we don't have right now, so. And then, like I said, it avoids a very costly and embarrassing mistake for me and all of you because we're not, we're not tearing up a brand new road three years after we just built it for a subdivision because of the undersized lines and we have to go add another one or rip the brand new line out, so. Um, and then obviously, like I said, determine the zoning and all that is very important because that's what you use to do these plans. And then I'll admit, this one, you can tell which way I favor because that's all I could think of. It's a negative is just, obviously, we are biting the bullet at one time instead of spreading that out, but I think by spreading it out, it just takes a lot longer. We don't have those answers we need, so. That's, you can maybe think of more negatives than I could, but I really generally couldn't figure it out anymore, so.
Well, basically, in that, you could be, the cost could be size five hundred thousand, but then that doesn't touch any of your improvements.
No.
It's gonna show you what you have to do.
And Dave and staff, we've had that conversation, you know, the master plans, once you get them done, they're gonna, they're gonna be a hefty bunch of projects that then need to be figured out how you're gonna pay for those. But at least then you have the answer to know what those projects need to be and you're not, you're not just saying, hey, council, I need forty million dollars, we're gonna go spend it, but it may not be the right projects. And, you know, that, that, that's what I'm trying to avoid is wasting money on projects that maybe we should have done a different way.
Yeah, since our work session when we talked about the, you know, doing a master and general plan and then doing utilities, um, over a period of time, I've changed my mind on that for a couple of reasons. One is I can see that we could probably save money in the long run and make up for the amount of money that we spend to do it all, all at one time. And the other reason is because of, you know, we just got to be, know what we're doing. But then, um, I have one more reason and I can't even remember what it was now, so.
It'll come to you later.
Well, some of them are so far behind too and, and we just, oh, I know what the other reason was because our, our general fund's pretty, fairly strong now, right now. Uh, we're at twenty-three percent, we could only go up to twenty-five percent. So taking some of our money for general funds isn't gonna kill us like maybe three or four or five years ago when we were really struggling. So I think this might be the time to do this and I think it'll save us money in the long run. Couple of other things just on the strategic plan, going back to strategic plan. One of the things that we're working with UVU was doing branding study, which will fall right into the strategic plan. So that's part of what the strategic plan would, would come from, the branding study. One thing we might want to look at, and the city is doing a SWOT analysis, which is a, just looking at your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. I think as a staff, you might want to do a SWOT analysis and that'll couple with strategic plan too. So I, I think we ought to look at a way to be able to do all these at one time, get it done so we know where we are. And when we have something back in nineteen ninety-one, nineteen eighty-nine, we have no idea. So it doesn't do any good to do these others and then wait a couple more years because we're so far behind, so. And then we, and then going along with that is, um, then we have to come up with a plan, how to pay for some of these improvements we need, not just have it on a piece of paper. We got to come up with a plan, how to pay for these, bite the bullet. If we've been putting off for a hundred years, we put off for another twenty years, we're just gonna get farther and farther behind. If I'm out of here in two years, you know what, I don't care because we got to do something, so.
And then, just to wrap this up, just, I put this together just to kind of give an idea. Obviously, based on kind of what you guys give us direction to move tonight is, you know, we would, if, if we want to do it all together, we would try to get the RFP done by the end of the month, at least pretty close. With the holidays coming up, it's not a really good time to put something out with Thanksgiving and Christmas, it's gonna be open right then. So probably, I'd guess, maybe the second or third week in January so people could get back to work and get us a good proposal put together. But I mean, we can still put it out, but we could give them longer than we normally would. Normally, we'd give them like three weeks to kind of respond to it, but we might give them, you know, a month, a month and a half. If we could get it done in the first part of December, then I guess that'd have to come in in January so that it would be ready. Obviously, I don't know, you know, it could take longer, but we would try to push them to get this all done in an eighteen month time period so we don't miss all this information and then, you know, not have answers to all this stuff. But, you know, we're not gonna realistically be able to say do all this in six months and get a good plan, so. And then that would put us into June or July of two thousand and nineteen, so. I don't know if you guys have any questions other than what we already talked about, but that's kind of where we're at, so.
Any other questions, discussions?
I have no questions.
Eighteen months, you think I'll say eighteen months? I, I think, not all parts of it, but I think to get everything, I don't know.
How about you have a late P year?
You know, we'd, obviously, the strategic plan wouldn't take eighteen months total, but it would, you would, you know, you would try to just keep moving in the next stage and the next stage. But yeah, I think the whole, if we, you know, we're doing.
Well, you could do it in stages probably, like parts of the cities you go across it. Well, okay, so you got to look at your overall plan for everything, but once that's said, you could probably start.
Now, my question is, can we use a lot of like the South Meadows? I mean, we've done a lot of stuff already there. I mean, we can use a lot of that stuff, Varsoco did some studies.
Yeah, we would incorporate all that we've already done as part of what we would give to the consultant. You know, we would, we're not quite starting from scratch, but they would have to take all that information and try to combine that. And that's where, I also, I didn't, I guess I didn't put this on the slide, but you know, by doing it all together, you avoid boxing yourself in. That's what kind of Saratoga Springs kind of told us is, so say you do your, your general plan and you do your zoning and then you find out, well, you got a lot of utility problems that you didn't look at. And then when you go to do those, now you find out, you got to almost go back and redo part of your general plan because it just doesn't work, right? You know, the same with what the mayor was saying is, where are those corridors? And how do you, how do you work with H, H South going west where you've got wetlands and railroad tracks and?
That's gonna be one of your first, first things you've got to figure out, where are all your corridors?
Exactly, because Jill and I met with the railroad a year, year and a half ago, I think it was, and just to do an overhead crossing on a railroad is about thirteen, eleven, thirteen million? So it's, it's not cheap and it's a long process to get approval. So, you know, that's the kind of stuff we have to be cognizant of when we're doing these plans is where is the best places to tackle some of these really expensive issues, so.
Yeah, I, I think from the city side, we need to be meeting in January and doing some of the general SWOT analysis that the council, the council was talking about and have a plan in place of how we're gonna attack this. Because I know sometimes we get in and start talking about the budget and everybody says, oh, I don't want to meet, you know, all these hours. I can see how we would be at least twice a month, we need all of them on a Saturday.
Yeah, and this takes everyone.
This is, this has got to be, I think.
We'll have to have a lot more work sessions than we have if you want to.
Yeah, because without you guys on the council and the mayor's, you know, input, what if, what if we go seventy-five percent way down the plan and then you guys are like, this is the stupidest thing we've ever seen.
Exactly, and I think the public should be invited to get into those things.
Yeah, as I say, we're probably gonna keep using qualtrics, I would assume, to get this done and get feedback from the community so we know whether we want to close the pool or open the pool or all those different options that a lot of people have. And then I think you need to get the community, that's part of the process is we need to get together, community groups to discuss. Because I think the community, I mean, this is a huge thing that we're undertaking and the community needs to be involved as much as possible.
So what we recommend, if you're willing, if you're wanting to go down this path with the combined plans that, uh, that we would get the RFP ready to put out the bid and we'd have to come back with a budget amendment to add additional funds to make this happen. But we want to make sure you guys go pay with it. We've, we've got budgets at a hundred thousand, we'll just go with the general plan. Because if we want to do all this, we're gonna have to get this RFP, which we're willing to do, get it out, see what kind of bids we get and then accounts with. Uh, we need to do a budget amendment, make sure we.
Like I say, on that, like the corridors and that, we need to start writing MAG and start getting on their radar and getting state and federal.
Yeah, and to get MAG, and to get MAG funding, you have to have a transportation plan that may, and it has to be on there.
Because you need to get nothing on there.
You can't even apply for funding if it's not on a plan that says this is a major road and a corridor that we're gonna use, so.
And I think it's hard for state officials to take it seriously when it comes to funding if we don't have a plan that we've done or, because we've got to have our portion done before we pass through end ups.
And if, and if you don't have them, you're gonna end up just like the, like, what a sad shape that would be.
Too late and it costs a much more money than they are. So I don't think we have a choice here. My personally, I think we've got to go, we've got to start changing, we've got to tackle this problem.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that's where you guys really wanted to go because I didn't want to go and, you know, come back and tell you we needed this huge additional money and then nobody was on board with it and we just wasted a lot of time. You know, we're going down a path we couldn't go down, so.
Um, as far as the vision statement, thank you. Probably start reaching out to staff right now and making. and because there's a lot more staff and diverse voices there that they're ready to go in January when whoever is sitting up here is elected. But I also think that those who are serving right now, we should reach out to them as well. They've served a long time and we should get some feedback from them on the vision statement. But I think we've got to start on that portion of it. There's a lot more to go, but that's the only thing that we can do right now.
Okay, anything else? All right, seeing none, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second? Paul's favor.